Board of Education for the Muskego, Norway School District. Verification of meeting posting. This meeting was posted in accordance with our state's open meeting laws. Attendance roll call.
Chris Buckminster?
Present.
Cassandra Bouse?
Here.
Tracy Blair?
Here.
Eric Schrader?
Here.
Pat Bowman?
Here.
Brett Hyde?
Here.
We have seven present and we have quorum for action items. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Schrader, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Approval of agenda. Motion is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda as presented, state by saying aye.
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 Post. Agenda is approved as presented. Moving on to item two, consent agenda. Motion is in order to approve the consent agenda in gross.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion or item a board member wishes to remove for individual consideration? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda in gross, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Consent agenda is approved in gross. Moving on to item three, superintendent's report. Dr. Thompson.
Well, good evening, everybody. We have some updates with regard to reentry planning, and so I'm going to turn over the first two items to Jeff Peterson for reentry survey results and the handbook changes.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. So the very first item that you can take a look at, and there's an attachment in there, July reentry survey results. That was actually the survey that we sent out to families where we were asking them to make a decision about whether or not they were going to choose in-person or virtual learning for their particular students. So you can take a peek at those particular results. We found them extremely helpful, not only because of the significant completion rate, which was just over 93% of our families that completed it, but also the information that we gleaned from it as far as just our opportunities to continue to plan, schedule, staff, each one of our respective buildings and our entire system. So as you can tell in the very first slide, the results of in-person, we had 83% of our families that chose in-person learning. Well, 11% chose virtual, and the corresponding numbers are seen in the bar graph there. The next slide is related to transportation. This was pretty significant because the responses here helped Julie and Dairyland form a strategy as far as how we are going to be transporting students that are going to be on our buses. Typically speaking, we have a 95% ridership rate, and as you can see, 62% of our families chose to ride the bus or use during the transportation this year. The next item on there is response to masks. We really wanted to find out what families were going to be having their children come to school with masks that they were going to supply, as well as what we need to do as far as planning for masks for children ourselves. We do have masks that were purchased that Jeremiah has secured for us. So we have two per student, three per staff, and they are customized per school logo. So this was helpful in being able to secure what we need to for mask supplies. Then the next slide, we were really interested in wanting to ensure that our families had a solid understanding about the mitigation measures. So what we did is we provided a graphic. There was a, well, I guess a one-page or two-page graphic that parents were able to take a look at, a visual with some key words that indicated what we were going to be doing in the classroom environment, as well as bus and cleaning, et cetera. And then the, what we did is we provided an opportunity for families to ask any questions that they had about our mitigation measures. And the number one question that was asked is, how long will my child have to wear a mask during the day? And this survey was actually given prior to, the initial survey was given prior to the mask mandate coming out from Governor Nevers. You can see on the next slide, the results of virtual by school, pretty well balanced, and that falls kind of within the ballpark of when we asked our families in late May, early June, about what option they were going to be choosing way back when in May or June. We had about 7%, 8% of our families that were interested in virtual at the time, with about another 10% that were unsure. So you can see where the final numbers lie with each one of our respective schools. And then you can see it broken down on the next slide, virtual by grade level. Again, pretty evenly dispersed across our entire system. And then the next slide, results for virtual, students with IEPs and 504s. This information was crucial for us to obtain because it allowed Kari Olson, building principals and our special ed teachers to schedule meetings for IEP placement decisions, and we were able to get individual families of students that have students with IEPs. And again, this was really, really helpful. As far as one other piece of information that we were looking to find, to find out some data on, was what was the main reason for why you chose virtual? And overwhelmingly, they did not want their child wearing a mask all day. Any questions on the survey data?
I have two questions.
Yep.
First one, for the mask question that you had was like slide, the one that had 65%, 23%, and 12%?
Yep.
Was the que, and I took this survey and I remember, so you'll have to remind me. Was the question, will I be, like, have you been bringing a mask to school, or do I not want to wear a mask to school? So what was the question? Was it?
Yeah, specifically when you look at the slide, I will be relying on the school-supplied face covering. Yep.
Do you think people may have answered it, like, I do not want to wear a mask, so that's why I put that. Because I have a feeling, like, kids are going to want to pick up their own mask, and they're going to want to wear their own mask so that they're not, you know, I don't know. I just.
Yeah, that's how we interpreted it, too.
I don't know.
Yeah, so they'll have two from the school, but what this showed us was that, okay, most people are not going to rely on the school having to supply. So we're, for us right now, we're not going to oversupply. We're not going to have a warehouse full. If we would have had 95% relying on the school to supply masks, then we would be looking at whether or not we needed to purchase more, because kids are going to lose them, right?
Right.
And so, but this says, we're good. We're good for now, and we'll keep track.
Okay. And then the second question was on the slide that it has virtual, and it goes from 23 to 61, and it has grades K-4 through 12, that slide?
Yes.
So if 61% or 61 kids were saying, I want virtual as a 12th grader?
Back when.
That's a great clarifying question. 61 students.
61 students, okay.
Yep.
And then is that reflective of, like, are there more of those students? Because I kind of feel like as Project I kind of progressed, you know, like, when they're always in classes, is that kind of class that's had it all? Like, when did that start?
Project I?
Yeah.
Um, 2012, 13, I believe, right?
So they, were they like seniors now? Like, I'm just curious if it's, like, reflective as to those kids are the ones that sort of stayed in that, and they're like a higher number?
After the first class. So Toby's class was the second year of Project I, and he graduated 2018 to 2017.
Okay, so it's a.
It was in the first year of Project I. Yeah.
I'm like counting them, I think.
Yeah, I know, I tried to.
Because they kind of stayed virtual, kind of. I mean, I kind of feel like that's the most similar to virtual, because you're doing it on your own, and you're kind of, you know, so.
Yeah, we did not, we did not pull any correlates with that as far as whether or not those students were Project I students in the middle school.
Okay.
It's a good question. It's an interesting ask, for sure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So then the next item on there would be recommended additions to the parent-student handbook. So these, there is an attachment for that, so thank you for pulling that up. So this is in direct response to things that we need to consider, given our current reality and approaches with in-person as well as virtual learning, or if in fact our entire system were to go to a temporary virtual learning environment, we need to really make sure that our parents, our students, our families, and our staff are aware of these particular pieces. So you'll see, in addition to recording devices in classrooms, and knowing that we will be streaming and recording certain lessons in the classroom, we wanted to make parents and students aware of that, in case they were not aware that those devices were going to be used. We also wanted to inform our families about isolation, quarantine timeframe requirements. This helps provide clarity for our families in case any of their students were to have to isolate or quarantine. And this is based upon, this is in our, in our parent FAQ, but this is based upon the most recent guidance that we're receiving from, from Waukesha County. Another item that we are including in the handbook would be language around face coverings, and when face coverings will be required throughout, throughout the day or throughout the entire school year. So there is an expectation that we will have face coverings throughout the year, while riding the bus, during arrival dismissal times, indoors and in common areas, and then while also in the classroom. Face shield, and this is again from the governor's order, face shield does not provide the same protection as a face covering, so it cannot be used in place of a, of a face covering or a mask. And then also, we thought it would be helpful to refer our parents back to the parent reentry FAQ, which we've been, which we've been providing parents in each one of our parent IC messages. But again, other COVID-19 updates will be able to be provided there. So we will be giving this to our building principals to add as an addendum to the parent staff handbook after this board meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
I'd like to highlight about quarantines.
When would be a example of a time when a teacher could wear a face shield and not a mask? What, what does that determine?
Well, that protects the eyes, for example. And so a teacher may use a face mask in addition to, a face shield in addition to a face mask, when they're working with students who might, you know, not be able to control their, you know, bodily fluids, or, you know, things like that. So that would be a time. Any other times, Tracy, that you can think of that?
You know, a lot of the elementary teachers really like it because there's the coughing, the sneezing, they know, you know, especially the younger age group. And so wearing a shield is just that, protecting the eyes.
So like in here, I mean, like, where it says they, they can't just wear that, they have to wear both? And there's only specific times that they could just do the face shield? I'm just curious, when, what is that? What is that?
Actually, actually, teachers could also, in the order, for example, if a teacher is doing a lecture, for example, they actually don't have to wear a mask. And so when they have, are presenting information to students, if they're six feet away, they could just wear a mask to protect themselves, but then students can see their.
Or shield, okay.
Things like that. So they have a definite hard hearing. Some of our hearing impaired kids, some of our special needs kids, where it might be frightening to them, they need to have that. That might be an appropriate time.
Okay. I was, I was hoping that we had some ability to help some of those people to do that. Good, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. Okay, and that, number three is just a reminder that we have a parent FAQ and learning plans that are up on our website, and they are updated as more information is, we're drilling down to that. Oh, sure, of course. Yeah.
Is there any possibility that we can add to the handbook or something about how we're trying to prevent breakouts from happening? So like seeing, we would really strongly encourage you to, when you're outside, you know, and unprotected, and you're going to be exposed that you're wearing your mask. You know, like, something just a little proactive in here so that we can kind of.
From the standpoint of, like, we're asking you to, you know, just remember to avoid mask gatherings and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, if they don't put themselves into a situation where they can be exposed and can be, then it's going to reduce the threat on us.
We did have a little message in our parent IC message last week to that point of saying, you know, we really just, we want to remain open. So if we don't bring COVID into our schools, it's not there right now. So it's, you know, it's going to be brought in if people, you know, don't, you know, respect some of those guidelines around staying six feet away and wearing a mask and those kinds of things. So.
You know what I'm saying? Like, because if you're in a classroom, and granted, I totally get the whole lecture, and she can take off her mask, and he or she can take off her mask and stuff like that, but if you don't have that exposure to begin with, then you don't have the risk involved. So it's like, if you can try to be proactive and preventive about that, like, when you're taking your lunch, make sure you're not sitting closer than six feet, and, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, just avoiding it so that it doesn't become an issue. Because that's what we've been really focusing on in our areas.
Yeah.
Because if you can, like, we'll get people calling all the time at the hotline saying, well, I think I got exposed because I did da-da-da-da-da. And they're like, well, were you wearing a mask? Yes. Okay, then you're good. You know, like, just kind of like trying to get people in that mindset that if you protect yourself and be proactive, then there doesn't really be this big of a problem. I don't know. I just would like us to be a little preventative help then.
Sure.
Behind the eight ball, I don't know. If there's something that we can put into.
Yeah, well, we have the stay safe to stay open, those pieces, too, from Waukesha County as a common communication piece of, these are the four or five things that if you, you know, heed these reminders, you will be better off and will be able to stay open longer, right?
Right, right.
Be able to stay in that. So we can look into that.
I'd just like to be proactive.
Yeah.
Sorry to.
Appreciate that. All right, so four and five, before we get to the metrics piece, is just an attempt to make some, bring some clarity around all the different virtual that we have going on, okay? So I think it might be easier to talk five first before we get into four. So five just says, when will virtual, remote, and distance learning occur? So we have, you know, potentially the board will be looking at a calendar that might have some stopgaps. So this is all kind of arbitrary, and they all kind of mean the same thing, but we're using terms differently so that there's some distinction that can be made, okay? But could one be used for another one? Of course. But what we're trying to do is just bring some distinction to it. So if we do put, if we do bring forward a, or if the board does approve stopgap weeks in our calendar, that virtual learning will be called remote learning. That's a planned virtual, and it's called remote. Okay? We're just calling it remote. The virt, I'm sorry, then if we're electing into the M&amp;S virtual learning option, that's a long-term virtual option. So when it's long-term virtual, like a trimester or semester, then it's virtual. If it's an in-person student who's required to be removed from school due to, like, a quarantine or an isolation, or there are metrics that close a school or the district, so there's kind of those two tiers, we're calling that temporary or short-term virtual, which is distance learning, okay? So we have remote, we have virtual, and we have distance. Those are the three. And that's how we are making a difference between them, or making a distinction between them. All right? And then there's this tier two, the hybrid blended and the tier three, and those are district levels. Like, if we would have decided to go AB, for example, at the start of the school year indefinitely, or if we would have decided, like MPS or some other schools, to start virtually and go indefinitely into that, we would not have had the survey we had, which was the dual option. You know, parents would have been able to choose a virtual or the in-person. We would have just been all virtual, right? So that's a tier three, and those are virtual then. So they're, those are called virtual or blended AB, which is virtual and in-person, okay? So now, with that in mind, I'm going to share tier one. So tier one, we decided was going to be a dual, a dual option. So we, that's why we sent out the survey, and we said, okay, what would you like? Would you like in-person with mitigation to reduce risk, or would you like a virtual, M&amp;S virtual option? And so we have a graphic organized, a graphic designer who's going to actually make this look pretty, but this is my best attempt at this point.
It looks wonderful.
Actually, this looks better than the first one. Everybody else tested the whole part that I tried to do. It was really horrible. But so what this is showing is, tier one, we had a dual option. We have in-person and we have M&amp;S virtual, okay? In-person and then virtual. Within the in-person, we have a potential where there might be this temporary distance learning if a child has been quarantined or isolated, okay? Or, but, so what happens in that situation is a classroom teacher will provide instruction temporarily through a distance modality. And virtual's in there just to kind of remind people, it's just virtual learning, but we're calling it distance. And the plan that the teacher's going to use is continuity of instruction, just meaning that they're just continuing with what they were doing in the classroom, just keeping them abreast. And that will be for a prescribed, short-term period of time based on the county's quarantine and isolation orders. 10 days, 14 days, whatever it is. And that student would just go back, or that group would just go back, or that classroom would just go back to in-person when that's done. There's also a potential for a temporary distance learning if the entire school or the district is closed. And that would happen not because of a quarantine, but that would happen because of our metrics, which we'll be talking about in a moment, when Tony and his team will be talking about that. And that, the classroom teacher provides instruction temporarily through a distance virtual modality, likely for a couple weeks. And we'd say, okay, you know what, this school's got to close. We have way too many, you know, teachers out, or we have way too many students out, or other metrics are indicating that we need to close for a couple weeks. Prescribed, it'll be like, we're closing for two weeks, and we're going to monitor, and we're going to determine whether or not we can come back the third week, or maybe it's the fourth week. But it's short-term. That's why it's distance learning. We might decide they're going right back into in-person. After two weeks, we're good? We're going right back into in-person. Or we might say, okay, the two weeks are up, but you know what, we need to kind of go slow to get back into the in-person. We might decide that, based on the metrics. And if that's the case, we would go into something called transition, which is an AB hybrid. So we might say, okay, high school, you are closed for two weeks, metrics start looking good, we're still having a hard time, teachers are kind of coming in and out, we have a bunch of students out on quarantine right now. We're going to feel better if we go into an AB. We're going to have 50% of the students in school every other day, and the other, every other day is virtual. And then during, you know, it'll be short-term, we'll say, we're going to do this for two weeks, and we're going to look at the metrics, and we're going to decide whether or not we're ready to go back. And if we are, we just go back. This group who's in tier one, dual, virtual, they do, they're not impacted by this. They stay their course. They do not get to decide, okay, now I'm going to go into this, or I like the AB, I want to go into this for a couple weeks. They're on a different track. They can't, they can't go into this, okay? Now, this is tier one, right? We have the tier two and the tier three. At semester, if we get closed down, and by the state, we're in tier three, like, everybody's virtual, that's when this group can decide, we want to be in that virtual, which is... The difference between that is, the high school students, for example, will be on edmentum, whereas the tier three kids will be taught by classroom teachers, okay?
And that'll stay even if they decide to switch over? They'll, they'll stay in there?
These, these kids at the semester can choose to get into a tier.
Classroom.
If, if we're in a tier three as a whole system.
Okay.
That's when they would be able to get into a, a school level or district level virtual. Okay? It's our best attempt right now. Hopefully, the flow chart will be even better. Okay.
So if we're going to allow students in the virtual at the end of the semester to flip over.
To here?
Right?
Yeah.
It's going to be critical that they are keeping pace or at the same place. So do we have, are the teachers talking to each other? Are they, how do we make sure that they're moving together?
Yeah. Actually, that would be great for Christie and Courtney, if you want to address that, that question.
Sure. So I can share for the elementary level, and then Christie, I can turn it over to you. So there's been communication sent out at the elementary level around expectations for consistency. So we have an elementary curriculum doc that outlines that. So that went out in the bi-weekly last week. Teachers have collaboration, designated collaboration time to come around what that planning is going to look like for them. So there's templates that they're filling out and then submitting to elementary administrators around what those plans are for collaboration as teams. And then we'll take a look at what that looks like between all three buildings. And then, in addition to that, on the 20th, so this week on Thursday, there's a meeting from 1:15 to 3:30 for teachers to hear additional information about the importance of alignment. So that's what we have in place right now for elementary.
Thanks. And at the middle school, we've spent the last week aligning our units in edmentum with those in first semester, looking at each content area, scope and sequence by content and grade level. And the high school has plans for teachers to evaluate their courses this week. So we're in the process with that as well.
So I have a question about the, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
For the difference between, thanks, for the difference between the two in-person versus virtual, are there, so the same, because my concern is, is the workload of this, because when I look at it, I'm like, oh, great, now the person that's teaching in-person is now going to have to maintain some virtual teaching and stuff?
Is here or this?
No, no, in the middle. The middle section, to me, seems like, oh my God, this is going to be overwhelming as a teacher. Because, I mean, I'm even feeling that angst with Marquette and UWM for teaching. But they, what they've done is they've actually hired people to maintain that center section. Like, so they're, they're like monitoring the temporary out people so that it's not overworking the teachers that are trying to do the day-to-day of the teaching. So I mean, have we thought about that? Because that middle section is, I can't even imagine as a teacher trying to figure that out. I don't know.
Go ahead, Courtney.
Okay. So I can share a little bit about that as well. So we had a task force for elementary planning of around 30 elementary staff members. A subgroup of that task force was specifically focused on planning kind of that middle area. And yes, absolutely, just a lot of conversation about how do we make this manageable. So in the elementary learning plan, we have communicated to families that will prioritize literacy and math instruction. So we're still providing opportunity and overview of what science and social studies is, and we're keeping those going. But primary focus for those teachers would be literacy and math. And then, in addition to that. And then in addition to that, Tony's tech mentor team has really been coming around just a lot of options, and those are teachers on those teams as far as how to simplify this in order to get learning plan information out to, to families. And I think they're just doing a really great job of being responsive, adjusting plans as we get more input. And when our conversations first started, it was a lot of, is it someone else? Is it the teacher? And just the management of the transition of the student. So when they were to transition to that, the communication needed to go to like a third party or a separate person, that in itself became pretty overwhelming. And then for that student to transition back and the classroom teacher know what happened versus the classroom teacher just continuing it on their own. So that was kind of what, why we landed where we did at the elementary level.
Thanks. And then at the secondary level, both the middle schools and the high school, 100% of staff will be posting weekly agendas on their teacher website. And so it's going to be very consistent and deliberately done that way so parents can easily find what students maybe missed in class that day and any, any kind of attachments that may be going along with it. In addition, at the middle school, they're going to be recording their lessons and then they'll be uploading those to their Google Classroom. And at the high school, they're live streaming using Google Meet. So we're really tapping into the technology that we have access to for kids to still participate without adding a whole lot of extra work on the teacher's end outside of having the technology ready and set up. And then on the backend of communicating what the lesson plan was for the day.
Thank you. Thanks for the question, Tracy. Other questions?
I have one. You've come up with a few definitions here, which is great. I mean, trying to distinguish between the different levels. Will you be adding that to the handbook so that the parents at least have a reference when they hear something about, we're going to, well, my child needs to do temporary distance learning? They'll understand exact, doesn't have to go in a lot of detail, but just very briefly.
We can absolutely do that. Right, Jeff?
I'm writing it down right now.
Thank you.
Like on the schedules that we got at the high school, the very first thing was like T V something. And I was like, what is that? And something virtual learning, total virtual learning or something, I think was, yeah. Anyways, but yeah.
And, and you will be, you said you're going to be developing a more detailed flow chart on some of this?
Yeah. With some links to, you know, the piece about quarantining and isolation and how many days that is, and what is a close contact, bringing them back to information and, and definitions that we've already defined in other situations, like in our FAQ and things like that, but bringing it together in this and having those links in there. So, yep, that's our intent.
And can you just remind me for the Google Classroom, is that recorded too then?
Uh, Google Meet, yes.
Or Google?
It may be unlimited storage within that, so we can store and distribute as needed. But also control, yeah, thanks.
With the math, it's probably hard to do.
Sorry. We can control who has access to it, so it wasn't just generally available to anyone to see it. It can be kept private, which is pretty important too with that content.
Right. So those students that are doing the middle section, they will automatically get like the link sent to them from the teacher?
Through Google Classroom. So your original mention of Google Classroom, that'll be our learning management system, and the links can be hosted there for easy access.
Okay. I guess that's manageable. I mean...
Yeah. Thankfully, and I, and I hate to say it this way, but due to our previous experiences, the exposure to classroom and Meet has been good, and so this won't be a huge transition from that. And then at the same time, leading into the school year currently with the same resources being used on a regular basis, means we expect there to be some levels of proficiency that we'll be taking advantage of, even if we have to transition into tier three.
And all the teachers are using Google Classroom?
Other than the younger grades at CSOW.
Correct. CSOW is the option that they felt was more user-friendly for both families and those primary level students. And there'll be some use of it into the upper elementary, but mostly 4K through second grade, I think is the primary use, but there'll be some exposure in third and fourth grades too.
Because I mean, just from what we experienced in the spring with my son, it wasn't that it was consistently across the board. So I'm hoping that that's something that's been sort of pushed a little bit more. Is someone like doing YouTube videos, someone doing this, someone, I'm like, ah?
Yeah. And even as Christie said, with the agendas being posted on the website for each teacher, that'll make it more of a specific access for students and parents as well. So even though we know there's a lot of content out there, a lot of resources being used, there'll be a nice single set location for that. And then Infinite Campus being that tool for communication about grades and access as well, so.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. So then we'll move, actually, Tony, you gave that back, but not because you're up.
Can I take Jeff off?
Oh, okay.
Temporary.
He's going to be doing some distance learning. Temporary, temporary.
All right, should we start? Okay, great. So everyone, you know, it's not a new concept that we've been using Qualtrics, right? And so all the data that's out there, it seems like a lot, both from a state, county, local perspective, and even the internal metrics that we have to consider are going to be rather intensive, and not in a bad way. We really want to capture as much data as possible, and this is the best way to do it. So we've been having opportunities to look at how we can leverage this within Qualtrics, but also how to manage it, because there's so much out there. It's really drilling down to the best metrics for us and when and how. And so, not that we're becoming the experts, but we're really trying to. And that's coming with a lot of collaboration with different teams, groups, school districts, et cetera. And it's really starting to grow. We're excited that we have an opportunity to show you what will be the draft format of a dashboard. And the goal is to have something internal that we use to make decisions about, and then have something public-facing that would have limited data, but things that would be enough to inform, right? Not to scare or overwhelm, but to properly inform. And that's really what we're going for. And, and so these things are being established. Now, again, do we have those lines in the sand? No. We're very open to your feedback, and, and hopefully after you see what we have so far, that'll give you an opportunity to provide that. So I'm going to have Pam share a little bit about what we've been doing to get to this point, and then we're going to have Michelle take the wheel and jump into Qualtrics and show you a little bit about what's there. So Pam, you're next.
Okay. All right. So obviously, we met as teams here to go over, to find the best metrics to use to help make those decisions, but we also reached out and collaborated with different departments and different districts. So we met with DHS, the Department of Health Services, the Waukesha County Health Department, and then districts Elm Brook, and then we had several meetings with Menominee Falls. And we found that to be very helpful because we could learn from them, and they learned from us, and any information they maybe heard that we didn't, they could share that as far as what data should be pulled, and then how do you track that data? And then how do you display that data so people can easily understand that? And then to help us decide different thresholds. And what you're seeing up on the board there are just basically two categories or buckets, so to speak, of how you'll look at the data in Qualtrics. So this is just giving you an overview of what you'll see because Qualtrics has so much in it. So on the left would be the internal key factors for metrics. So we have daily attendance rate by building for certified staff, non-teaching, and for students, and then looking at the daily guest teacher fill rate. And then for the external side, we do number of new cases per day by city and county, and then looking at the burden rate, which many districts are doing. So it looks off of the 100,000 cases per day and the 14-day rolling average by state, county, and city. And then number three is more around the positive case metrics, such as what are the risk levels? So are we at like a level green, where we're doing fine, up to a level red, for instance? And then they give you guidance points to consider for each color that you might be at for that risk level. And then the last one would be positive case, the seven-day weekly average by state, county, and city. So we basically have those two different areas to look at, and then there's other tabs that have more data that's more of a deep level, and we dig down into it. And then Michelle will share the dashboard.
Can I just ask a question before we go on to the business? It's not really related to what you're doing, but more for, for, like, to process. Guest teachers. I mean, we share guest teachers with many districts, correct?
We do.
How's that going to work?
Jeff? How's that going to work, Jeff?
I mean, that's my thought is, is if we start getting our teachers out on sick leave, I just don't see how, with every district having that same issue potentially, I think where we're really going to run into trouble is trying to fill with guest teachers.
Are we able to keep the teachers that are just quarantined working?
Yes. So Jeff can kind of share our plan with you.
I didn't even look here. It just, you started talking about guest teachers.
Yeah, well, we can keep going. All right, that's a really good question about guest teachers. In fact, last March, we were asking ourselves that very same question. What's going to happen when school reopens and how are we going to fill positions and what happens if we're short guest teachers? So we've got several strategies. We have what we call permanent guest teachers or building substitutes. So what we've done is we've ensured that we are hiring at least one for every single one of our buildings and two, if not more, for our larger buildings. Those people will serve or have a homeschool, and if needed, we will pull them to go to other schools if in fact there's a need. So that's different than what we've done in the past. Having more of those particular people to help fill in times of need will be a benefit to us. Additionally, we communicated out to all of our support staff, anyone that has a, an associate's degree or higher. We have asked them or requested of them to get a three-year substitute teaching permit to go through the mandatory training that's necessary, and then apply for a, for the three-year sub-permit and become an employee of Teachers on Call. We have quite a few support staff members that took us up on that. So that will afford us the opportunity, if in a pinch, we're going to pull those particular people from their otherwise position, maybe they're a general aide, and then put them as a guest teacher in the classroom. Additionally, we put something out in the parent IC message just last week, asking for parents that are interested in volunteering in our schools as well as for those that want to become Teachers on Call employees. After looking at that Google server that we sent out, we have quite a few parents that have demonstrated an interest in wanting to become a guest teacher, so we're continuing to build that guest teacher pool. So we hope that some of those strategies that we've put in place are going to help. We don't know if it's going to completely resolve it. The last thing that I would say is this, we're looking at bumping our guest teacher pay also, so that it is very competitive, and people are going to choose Mesquite, Go Norway, not just because this is a great place to be, but also because they're compensated well.
Supply and demand, right? I think I would add the, the other piece, quarantine teachers. Like if a teacher is well, they will be able to teach from home or from an area, and then we would have a supervisor in the classroom. So that would be, we're, we're trying that as a strategy to support if, if a teacher is quarantined, we'd be able to, to work through that.
What would be the qualifications for a supervisor, classroom supervisor?
It could just be an aide, it could be a volunteer.
They wouldn't have to have a guest teacher?
They would not have to have it, because they're not teaching, they're just supervising. So we have volunteers supervising, you know, trips, field trips and things like that. So that, that's the other part of that parent questionnaire. Do you want to, you know, could you support us over lunch period? Could you support us as a, you know, some nursing opportunities if we needed to help with some contact tracing and things like that? So we're just looking for, you know, to kind of make lists. And the other piece is that ESC administration, well, and of course, building administration always does this, but we have committed also that we will be in schools and supporting the guest teacher pieces as much as possible as well.
So would we be better off raising that permanent guest teacher for school, let's just say, to five? And tying those 25 people up for the whole semester or the whole school year, at least the semester, at the rate that we pay, instead of considering maybe increasing guest teachers rates? And even if there aren't five, five teachers absent that day, but there are a couple aides or something else, we just use them in more roles. So then we're guaranteed to have 25 guest teachers or whatever you decide to be.
Sure, right.
Four times five, 20 or whatever.
Certainly.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great idea. One of the reasons why we lifted the number of those building guest teachers this year, we use the data that we've collected for the last three, four years around the number of absences at each one of our schools, as well as those that haven't been filled. And the number that we came up with was very well-aligned to the data that we collected. But of course, this year could be, could be far higher, right?
And I, I think the other benefit of that is, is you have these same individuals in these schools who understand what the expectation of that school and that principal are. And because they're ingrained in the culture a little bit more, are willing to take other responsibilities on, instead of Jim Smith that comes in and expected to be the FIED teacher that day, and you asked him to do an English class and he's mad, and he's not doing anything.
Sure.
Because he doesn't know the culture, he doesn't know the people.
Yeah.
Do you think that people on, that Teachers on Call, there's a lot that are from our area, that you'd be like, well, we're always pulling from those same people anyways, so we wouldn't have to have them on the, on the, you know, on the payroll? Would you, like, is there a, I don't, I don't use that? You guys use it. So do you feel like there's a core group of people that you pull from there anyways? So it's not really a, we don't have to have them on the payroll?
The only concern would be is if we have a lot of other districts asking for a lot of people. It's based on when you make the request, because those might go online and get snapped up in Elm Brook and in Hartland Arrowhead because they're having a lot of absentcies, and then ours are a little bit later, and all of our Mesquite people are already...
But I'm just curious, do they, do you feel like they stay local?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a core group of guest teachers that will only be in Mesquite, Go Norway. What I failed to say before also is that Teachers on Call is implementing a strategy this year where they're limiting the number of districts a guest teacher can go to.
Except Menominee Falls has a bunch of teachers out because everyone has COVID, and then you have a guest teacher there, and then we get that guest teacher. We don't, we don't want the Menominee Falls COVID. Keep it there.
So they never used to limit it, and now this year they are. So that, in essence, will do a couple of things. One, keep them contained to core districts, but then also increase that pool of guest teachers for every single district.
Do they get paid more through the on-call versus ours? Is that what the difference, like, what would be the...
Yeah, they have benefits there. I mean, they actually get days off. Yeah, it's, it is good to be in Teachers on Call as a, as a guest teacher.
The only thing is, is consistency of, if you're permanent, you're with us. You know you're going to work every day for the semester.
And we get to choose the best of the best. So, I mean, we will certainly look at, we have, we have, we're shooting for 12 right now, but I'm sure, we can, we can shoot for more and we can see where we're at. I've, was on a call last week, and there's a school district that's looking for 16 teachers at this moment in time, teachers for their virtual.
Wow. So that's 16 guest...
Right.
Teachers that are going to be available.
Exactly. And our perm guest teachers are like out the door already. The ones that were hired like last month, it's like, oh, you want to be a perm guest teacher? They're already gone teaching in another district because this dual system that we have, that's common for other Waukesha County school districts to, or, you know, other school districts in our area anyway. So, but thank you, that's, you know, both of those...
All right, let's get back to the exciting stuff.
Okay.
You know, it's those matrix numbers.
Okay, so as Tony and Pam mentioned, we're just going to talk about the first two tabs on the dashboard tonight. So the first one is the internal key indicator. So this is, you know, what we have the most control out of and probably the most interesting as far as impacting our students. So I'm going to also preface by saying it's, a lot of this is sample data or mocked-up data, so don't look too closely at it. It's really just to kind of give you a visual idea of what it could look like. So the first two that we've got on this tab are the certified staff or the teacher's attendance rate by building and then by day, so we can kind of start seeing some trends. We've included some indicators on here, like what is the average attendance of the teachers? You know, maybe this is going to become the level of concern, and then with... You know, maybe this is going to become the level of concern and then with this is at a high-risk level. All of those things, you know, to be determined what those rates actually are, but again, a way for us to look quickly at it and see where we're at. And then the guest teacher fill rate, you know, whether that's like just today, here's where we are and our expectation is, you know, 90 and we're only at 88. Or if we end up doing that more as a graph of kind of a long time, we can see that as well. And then very similarly, the non-teaching staff attendance by building and again, with those rates that, you know, could differ a lot from the teaching staff and then as well, the student attendance by building. Again, primarily to kind of give you some idea of where it's trending. And then there is the ability, there will be the ability as well to filter on here. So, you know, I have these, the blues are kind of elementary, the greens are middle and then the purplish one was the high school. So, you'll be able to filter by like a school level to see if it's impacting more at the elementary level, the middle level, or then a building as well. All right, any questions on this?
Does it do projective type numbers too? Like, knowing that there's people out for 14 days, can it project like what the numbers?
Right now, it does not. So, if that's something that we want to do, like, we can definitely look into that as well. Yeah, because I think that probably would be more important at the teaching or the staff level as well, so. Okay, and then the external key indicators. So, the majority of this data then is from the State Department of Health and Services website. This is a little limited right now because it doesn't break down a lot of the data other than positive and negative. We don't really have breakdowns by age level yet. We're supposed to be getting that this week, so I think that will, you know, be a bigger impact for us because we're definitely more interested in the younger ages than we are the community as a whole, but this also can give you an idea of where we're headed. So, we've got the number of new positive cases per day. So, this is a conglomeration because they don't really have the city or we don't have any district data. So, what we have is called census tract data. So, there's five census tracts in Muskego and two in Norway. So, those are all combined in here to call it Muskego, Norway. So, that's kind of the combined here, the new cases, and then comparing that to Waukesha County, just so you can again kind of see trends. And then, one way to equitize, I guess, a little more because, right, the state has like 5.6 million people, the county has 404,000 people, and then Muskego and Norway combined have about 31,000 to 32,000 people. So, what they do a lot is this per 100,000 rate. So, then that way it's more easy to compare your numbers to another community when you would have a much different population. So, as you can see here, we've got divided up like how the state is trending, how the county, and then Muskego and Norway separately, only because we're a little concerned since the town of Norway does reside in Racine County. We're not sure if we'll get the breakdowns by age group for that data like we are supposed to be getting from Muskego. So, at this point, we're just kind of keeping it separate so we can trend that as well. And then this one is like a rolling 14 days, so it's kind of averaging the past 14 days at each point, again, to see trends. And then the Waukesha County Department of Health Services came up with these different areas for risk level based on the number of cases. So, this is then specifically for your area meeting your population needs and it's probably, it's kind of hard to see from this far back, at least it is for me. But, so then the city of Muskego, because if we're considering, oh, Muskego and Norway, I'm sorry. So, we're considering it's around 32,000. So, the numbers are there. So, on-track, green, basically, we have to have zero cases in the area to be considered on-track. And then you've got your community spread, your accelerated spread, and then your tipping point. And so then we've got these numbers individually for the cities, for Waukesha County and the state, and then you can see those over here color-coded. And then, these are just averaged of the past seven days, like where we're going. So, you can see here, Muskego and Norway combined was at an average of 3.1, which is considered orange, but then the next week's worth of data was down to 2.6, so now we're in the yellow. So, again, just to kind of give you a quick look at where we are.
Would those not be rounded numbers? Why do we have like a .3?
Because it's average, right? And because you're looking at, you know, well, it's average. So, over seven days, you know, you have a four and a three and a one and an eight and you average those together. And actually Pam and I had talked about this earlier today because I could not, I could put it not rounding them. So, then you would see three the first week and then you'd see three the second week. So, then I feel like you miss out on the fact that it did decline.
Yeah, I get that.
So, yet I know it's a little weird.
It's just weird because it's like.
So, you're thinking of people.
People.
It's a .6 percent.
Exactly.
But, it's just an average, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the last two graphs were like a sample that the Waukesha County Department of Health Services had talked about, where you would see this all ages confirmed case rate. So, that's the per 100,000, so you can compare again, state, county, and then your area moving average. And then, this is definitely sample because it's just a copy, but then they wanted to have like a zero to five, you know, group and then a six to 10 group and then an 11. So, they were going to break that down, which hopefully that comes this week and then this will be a little more valuable. But, again, to kind of give you, with the seven-day moving average, you can kind of see more of the trend. And it's also supposed to even out, a lot of times on the weekends, there's a little less testing going on. So, then you'd see these big drops and wonder what's going on. So, that's what the moving average does as well.
So, fake data, but otherwise, this will be populated and then hopefully at our COW meeting next Monday, we potentially would have something that we could share with you in the board docs that would be more specific to Muskego, Norway.
And then this is still internal, right?
This is actually the external. Because this is the data that's coming from the state's.
It's not within our system, it's the county, you know, it's our community essentially. But, as far as external facing, like, is it going to be something that we're going to be showing to our population? Like, if somebody came onto our metrics, could they see this? This would probably be something you'd probably consider being held there as a.
For aggregating it, it's already available.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's probably why.
Well, because I think you had one picture in here, it was the COVID, the second one, two, COVID two, and then you just had numbers. I feel like that would be more, was it on our board docs thing, or is this COVID two?
Positive cases.
Yeah, yeah, it said 1,060, yeah, yeah. The COVID two one, that one, yeah. I feel like that would be more, I don't know, easier to read or kind of get than graphs and all this, you know.
As long as it's not misleading, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we're working through those details. Any other questions or comments about the metrics as they are at this point?
And then if I may, just going to throw one question in. Infinite Campus as an example, Melanie, who's our registrar, Melanie Strom, took an update and then allowed us to enter in our students and track them within Infinite Campus and then also allowed us to have a way to track absence and then down to certain detail and even symptoms. So, that's an opportunity for us. It doesn't mean it has to be populated in this dashboard, but that's a useful tool. And then Julie shared that Skyward, from a staffing perspective, is working on something similar. Now, has it ruled out completely? Not yet. But, again, the data flow that we can get from Infinite Campus or Skyward is something we can once again consider pulling into Qualtrics, which then allows us to make decisions on that once it's collected.
Yeah, the students say, it must be the UW system is, they have an app that they can put in their like symptoms and stuff and then it'll shoot like.
Sure.
How many people are off and how many, it's amazing. So, yeah, that'd be kind of cool.
Well, it might be Qualtrics because CW is pretty popular within that system.
Right.
So, really it's a survey. They enter the information and then it's pulled in, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that. That concludes the updates piece on the reentry. The next, I. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
No, no, that's okay. I just, are we doing, okay, so I'm just looking back at this one and on the transitional learning, it goes back to this AB schedule? But, what if we've never done the AB schedule? Like, if we're not, so we just all of a sudden have to transition everybody to it?
So, this would happen if, for instance, the high school would be, they, we had to close them because of metrics, right? So, they're closed, they're in the, to use the right language, temporary distance learning, okay? So, they're in that and we're feeling like, you know what, two weeks have gone by, the metrics aren't that great and we're concerned. It doesn't seem like the trend has been really up and down. Let's, let's consider bringing them back in this transition learning, which is 50% of the kids are there in-person on an A day and then the other 50% come in on a B day and the other, and then the reverse is happening.
But, do you think we could start that in the middle?
Sure, it will happen, it'll just be temporary, just for a couple of weeks and, or as long as it would take.
I just think that's like, so, all right.
And it might not, it might not happen. It might be that it makes more sense that we just go back into in-person. It isn't required, it's not that it has to happen, it's an option. It might make sense at that time, it might not.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. I am here tonight to present to you the 2019-20 Secclusion and Restraint Report. This is an act formerly known as Act 125. It has been revised and is now named Act 118. This act requires that I meet with you before October 1st of this upcoming school year to share with you the total number of seclusion and restraint events that occurred last school year for 1920. In addition, I need to provide you with information regarding the number of students who were involved in those seclusion and restraint events and how many of those students were children with disabilities. So, just to bring us all up to speed, so we're clear on the language and terms being used, seclusion is involuntarily removing a child to a space and preventing them from leaving. Restraint refers to a restriction that immobilizes and reduces the ability of a student to freely move his or her arms, torsos, torso, legs, or head. So, as I shared with you last year, we are deeply committed to addressing behavior through positive behavioral supports. And in doing so, we feel that it's incredibly important to train as many staff as possible in what we term as crisis prevention intervention. It's a training that focuses on de-escalation tactics with the understanding that sometimes in order to help a child calm, we need to put them in a protective hold if they're in imminent danger of harming themselves or someone else and that there are circumstances in which we need to prevent a child from leaving a space or a young person from leaving a space so that they do not harm themselves or somebody else. So, in an effort to ensure we have people appropriately trained to engage in these actions in a manner that keeps our students and our staff safe, we have approximately 200 staff trained in MNS. The requirement under the law is that you have one person in each building. We have, the individuals who are trained are all special education case managers and therapists, all special education instructional assistants, all school psychologists and social workers. In addition, we have many regular education teachers, many regular education instructional assistants, as well as building principals trained. All buildings have required their crisis teams. Those are the individuals who respond if there is a crisis called in the school. All of those members of schools are trained as well in crisis prevention intervention.
Is that the SROs too?
That is correct, our SROs are all trained. As a matter of fact, all but one of our SROs just updated last year and the one that didn't update last year will be updating this year. We do require our staff to update their training and go through the full training every three years and all new staff are required that are in those required categories, so special education staff and student services staff, as well as SROs. All of those individuals are required to participate in training within one year of hire and then continually update their training every three years. So, really exciting news to share with all of you tonight. I do have some trend data here for you. In this column here, you're going to see the school year. So, this is the most recent school year and then we went ahead and provided you with five trend years. So, the number of seclusions and/or restraint events that have occurred in our school is a total of six. The number of students involved this last year was one student and that was a student with a disability. You can see there's a substantial reduction in the number of seclusion or restraint events that we have experienced. I do attribute this to the fact that all of our schools are now PBIS, tier-one minimum schools. They have trained and have teams, so there's a lot of positive behavioral supports occurring. In addition, we have trained all of our staff on trauma-informed practices, all of our teaching staff and all of our support, or, excuse me, student services staff, as well as building principals. And we are working with all of our staff and as a matter of fact, as of tomorrow, all of our teaching staff and student services staff, as well as our leadership team, will have been trained in developing strategies for helping students develop soc, excuse me, self-awareness, self-regulation, and calming tactics.
All right. So, is this a trend you're hoping to see continue, that it'll be at these lower levels?
Yeah, ideally, we'd be at zero, but in all reality, this is a very strong set of results considering that we have about 5,000 students in the district.
I think the numbers are good, but you also have to put into factor that we were out of school for six months, so there weren't anybody to restrain because we were in virtual learning. But, I mean, no, I think even if you doubled it, that's less than less, so that's good.
I agree. So, from the middle of March through, yeah, that does adjust the results a bit.
Mm-hmm. It helps your numbers. I should ask the parents how many times they were restraining it all, they will know.
Probably more than that.
Maybe our numbers would be up.
Thank you, Kari. Any questions for Kari? All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you. And then the last item in the superintendent's report is the contributions to profession and Jeff Peterson will be at WASPA Fall Webinar Series on creating a hiring screening process for interview team members and eliminating bias. Thank you, Jeff. All right, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Moving on, I have four other reports, President's Report. I have four President's Reports. So, I have, just quickly, I have other things to cover, some of them are probably more appropriate on our resolution action. We had new employee orientation last week and it was really nice to sit and talk to a lot of the new teachers and staff. Very excited to be here. We were able to sit in a, on a table with the plexiglass partitions and, you know, outside of what I think I would be doing in class, like pushing them and moving them around, you know, cat back and forth, outside of that, playing around, it, you know, it actually worked and it was really nice to have that. And so, thank you for that, just incorporating that into the whole orientation. Also, after that, I thought is, well, it was very interesting, I roamed around the high school and I got to sit in on Todd's cabinet meeting and stuff and, you know, I got to talk to some custodians. I went, I've been looking and walking through all the other schools all week, last week, talking to staff, teachers, some of our principals. And it's really important to note that all the strategy we do, all those tactics that we do, this staff and teachers are just, they're just pumped, they're just 100% trying to accommodate whatever we're asking them to do. On the classrooms, they use the pride and professionalism and making sure that the sanitizers there, the signs for social distancing. And it's kind of interesting from the schools you go, the different ways. the different ways they're trying to communicate that. And they're all into it, and they're all, and they know our strategy is to return to school. And they are 100% for it. And, you know, I can't thank them enough. And I just want the board and the public to know that these are all just, me just popping it and seeing what people are doing, and trying to see what's going on with our schools through all of this mitigation efforts, all the stuff that Jeremiah's doing. And Jeremiah, your, your staff has been, he's not here.
He's on YouTube.
I'm sure he's on.
The staff is outstanding. I mean, they walked me through two of the classroom configurations, exactly how this is gonna work. From the two aides I met at the school that had talked to me about the bus, and how they're trying to work that out, from the masks going off the bus, and it's just, all of it. So, I think it's very impressive that what we're trying to do here, strategy-wise, is being carried out tactical-wise in every one of our schools. So, thank you, Dr. Thompson. Thank you to all of the teachers and staff in our school district for carrying out our goal and making sure that we do return to school in person this fall. So, that is all I have on the President's Report. Board member reports. Cassandra. Tracy.
I have a C1 meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll get an update, though?
Yep.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing.
Carrie?
Nothing.
I'll call you after. Okay. Brett?
Glad to call. No, nothing.
Bob? Mr. Eric Schrader?
I have one small.
Yeah, right.
It's got a lot to do with you. So what a great day at Mesquite Go Norway School Districts, District. So I've been kind of listening to everything you've been talking about today, and I'm trying to take in everything I've been a part of for the last 14 years here. And we do have a great school district, there's no doubt about it. So, when I first sat in this chair, well, first of all, this is my last meeting, if you're not aware. But, when I first sat in this chair 14 years ago with Dr. Drury, nice gentleman, I guess I really didn't see eye to eye with the way he was progressing in our school district. And we were an okay school district, to be perfectly honest with you. Maybe good, but we were okay. And I think a lot of people that worked during that time would agree with that. When Dr. Schrader came, I think he was all about taking good to great. And I think he would have taken good to great if he was here longer, but he, he decided to move on and, and progress in his career. And I think we got from okay to very good. I'm not sure we ever made it to great, but we probably would have. And for the first couple of years with Dr. Thompson, we were getting there, getting there, getting there. And I think about, where it clicked with me was about four years ago. I think we got to great. And we've sustained great, I believe, over the last four years. And that's difficult to do. It's easy to progress there, and then sit back on your laurels and, 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 and not continue that greatness. And I think we've done that. So, you guys should be proud of where we're at today, because where I saw we were at 14 years ago, I really didn't think we would ever be where we are today, to be perfectly honest with you. My mom just had her 86th birthday a few days ago. And she's the one that taught me about public service. She was in public service her whole life, similar to your mom. And she always talked about, even if you decide to work private sector, you need to be involved in the public service side of, of something in your community or in your state. So, 30 years of law enforcement, served the city I grew up in, 20 years here in Mesquite Go, out of my 22 years that I've been here. I've been either on city council or here. And you're not, you're not making a lot of money, but at the same time, it brings you a lot of satisfaction that you've helped your community progress to the, to where it is today. So, Dr. Thompson, I thoroughly have enjoyed working with you over the last, all 14 years, to be honest with you. You were here in the beginning, but mostly since you've been the superintendent. I mean, we made the right decision. There was a lot of discussion where we should go, whether, I mean, Dr. Schrader really had some big shoes to fill, and we wanted to make sure we had someone to fill it. And there were some doubts in our minds and our hearts that you would, but you've completely filled the shoes without any issue and made them even bigger, to be honest with you. Just one thing that I really have seen, and I'm not saying we don't do this, but to really have a cohesive board and administration, there has to be transparency between both, but even more from administration to the board. Because these board members are responsible to every community member, and if they don't know what's going on, they're gonna get questioned about something, and they're gonna look foolish. So that's something I see as really, you need to make sure your administration's always been transparent with at least the board, but hopefully the whole community. And I think you do a good job with that, but always bear that in mind. Julie, how many business managers are there in the state of Wisconsin? Hundreds?
Hundreds.
You're the second best. I'm not gonna say, and I want you to strive to be the best. But your father taught you well.
Yes.
There's no doubt about it. And you do a great job, and, and the best business manager I've worked with, with the city, with my, the city of Franklin, when I worked there for 30 years, or the school district. I mean, there's a lot of hard decisions to make, and a lot of information that we all want things a certain way, and there's only one way you can make it happen. But you understand that by cultivating relationships with us, that we're gonna be okay if it's not going the direction that we want it to go, but the majority does. So I do appreciate that, and that's great. Jeffrey?
Twinsy.
You know, you know how I feel about you, because he, and I never said this to anybody, but just him and I, but two or three years before he was part of administration, I was talking to you about taking the next step to be a part of administration, when we were sitting over at Bay Lake. So, I'm glad you finally did, and you're doing a great job. And you should have done it a few years earlier, because I'm sure they would have had you a few years earlier, so.
Thank you. I remember what you said, never turn down an opportunity that's presented to you. That's what you said. I remember that.
Yeah.
And he did, actually, that's funny. He did turn down.
That's why I said it to you.
Great words of encouragement.
That's why I said it to you. And Kari, and Christie, and Courtney, and Jeremiah, is Jeremiah here? Jeremiah, you are the best. I'm never gonna say it again, but you are. Tony, Jamie, I mean, this is why it's successful. You have to pick the right people. And really, and I'm not just saying this because I'm leaving, but as a whole, this is probably the best group of administrators that we've had together at one time in 14 years.
For sure.
Yeah.
Hands down.
And you know, we've had struggles in the past, through that 14 years, because you never could get that whole group. There was always an outlier or two that made it difficult to be successful. And we saw it, I saw it, I know Rick, when he was sitting here, saw it, Christie's it. So really, the group as a whole is, is, is probably why we're sitting here today. And what I was thinking about, as we were talking about COVID and everything else, all the work that you guys are putting into this and trying to make it right, we won't make it right for everybody, we understand that. But if we make it right for the majority, we're gonna be successful. And this, can you imagine school districts that are not at the level of organization and thoughtfulness that we are, how they're struggling right now?
Yeah.
I can't even imagine. I just, I turned on a couple of school board meetings, because I was interested. So up in the Green Bay area where I'm going, every school board in District has their meetings on TV, so you can watch everyone. And I turned on a couple of them, and I'm just like, man, that's, we, we, we've talked about that like four months ago, and they're just there now. So, that also makes me think that the preparation that we're putting into this, and I think it happens with everything we do, but you're seeing it more now, because this is such an unprecedented thing we're dealing with, really makes this district shine. And then, I guess, finally, for the board members, like I talked about with Julie, cultivate relationships with each other. Because what I found out from 20 years of sitting on the side of the desk is, especially with the city, because they're much more, I don't know what, I try to say it politely, but their interactions aren't quite as polite as ours. You really have to have relationships, Chris will agree to this, where if something's really important to you, if you cultivate relationships, even if you are always on that six to one, you're the one, or five to two, and you're the two, or four to three, and you're the three, if something comes by that's so important to you, you're gonna get four votes. But you have to cultivate those relationships before you go and ask for, for that assistance. So, don't be the lone wolf. You can't do it by yourself. With all that said, it's been fun. I'm a little anxious, I told Bob earlier, I'm leaving the home that I've been in for my whole life, so.
Where are you going?
I'm going to Green Bay. So, I've been up and been back since December, because I work up there now, and, or sometimes here at home, and sometimes up there, but, so I'm getting used to it. It's a slower pace, it's interesting. I'm living in Howard, which is Bayport, that's where we beat in the football championships last year. My Mesquite, my Mesquite Go football flag, I haven't had the guts to put it up yet.
Put it up.
I mean.
When you live there all the time.
Yeah.
But with all that said, I mean, keep doing what you guys are doing. You're gonna get some new blood now, and it's, I'm sure it's gonna be nothing like me, because...
There's nothing like you.
I apologize to anybody that I gave a hard time for anything, but the only reason I was sometimes like that, and I wanted to make sure that, I just wanted it to be better for all of us. And, and I think it's pretty cool where it is right now. So keep going, keep chugging along. In a selfish way, I'm glad my last kid is out of high school. Kinda glad that you guys are gonna be taking care of this, and I'm not, because I think it's gonna be a trying year. And my gut tells me that we're not gonna be in school the whole year, but hopefully we are. So, good luck to everyone. And if you ever go to Green Bay for a Packer game or whatever, you have a place to stay. I got a big enough house to house your whole family, so feel free to get ahold of me. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the administration and the teachers, the community, the students, thank you. Thank you for your service, you know, starting your 15th year. You've been in every role on the board, other than the president, but, you know, served very, very well. You're always engaged, always prepared. You know, it was some tough questions that we had to, like, respond to, but made us better. It helped us be prepared to answer those questions when our constituents and, you know, the, the community would ask us those, so it just, it was good. It was great, actually. We learned from you, we grew along with you, and we are not here without you, you know, you and the entire board. So we are so grateful that you took all that time out of your, you know, schedule with your family, with, you know, other things that you could have been doing, and you spent 15 years with us nearly, you know, and we are so grateful. So thank you, on behalf of everybody.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Eric, I can't think of a better person to have served as an alderman with or a school board. And, yeah, you can be a pain, so, there is no doubt. However, what was so cool, and it's all about the relationships that you suggested, you always were the pigeonhole and finding the answers, even back on the common council. And while we were all generalists, basically, what you never had an issue with was, was letting others also focus on what they wanted to, like me and Pliny, or Public Works. But yet, I would defer to you a lot, and ask you questions, and you would do the same. And, you know, you, you just never disappointed. I've learned a lot from you on the common council. I've learned a lot from you on the school board, so I wish you the best. And I will be in Green Bay a lot. So, definitely be at calls, and so more, more good times to come. But thank you for your time, your service, and your talents on the school board. So, well, once again, thank you. Okay.
You can tell Jeremiah whatever you want.
Yeah, it's recorded, it's recorded.
Okay, moving on, other committee reports, we have none. Okay, moving on to item five, resolution action items. A 2020, 2021 preliminary budget.
Darn it. I'm all cold again here, okay. Motion to approve the 2020... Nope, just give them back in the swing. Motion to approve the 2020, 21 preliminary budget and tax levy as presented.
So moved.
Discussion.
Okay, so included in your packet was the preliminary budget, the documents, both the budget and the tax levy. Just a couple items to note. We went with an F T E projection of down 50 F T Es for our student count. And that's simply because that's worst-case scenario for us to be able to deal with. Anything better than that only helps us. Our per people increase of $179 for the revenue limit per student, and also categorical aid of $742 per student. So, we are presenting a balanced budget for the annual meeting. This budget will also show a tax levy decrease, again, for the 10th year in a row, which is very exciting. I did include today the absolute gem of a document, the D P I document, which actually has all of our general and special education funds, as well as our debt service and Fund 50, in a fun Excel format for you to review, if you're interested. But this document will be the one that we'll present at the annual meeting. The preliminary budget document is simply a summary of that. And then the tax levy document, if that's up there. Yep, that one right there. So here you will see a preliminary tax levy of a decrease of .22%. At our last meeting, we had discussed this as well. But this tax levy represents us being able to manage the levy by increasing the amount of referendum-approved debt service that we can levy. So, we have a tax levy that's decreasing more than the .22%. If we levy an additional 1.675 million in the referendum fund, that gets us to the .22% decrease. And then that money would go into the debt service fund for us to use for another defeasance in the future, similar to what we just did. And again, that just helps us pay down our debt even sooner. So, I would recommend having that additional levy in there, still maintaining a decrease in the overall levy.
What is the date, again, can you remind me of our annual?
I believe it's October 26th.
October 26th. And this, and as far as, so this is the actual final, or the preliminary? Or this is the one that will be on?
So this is the preliminary that will be presented at the annual meeting, just because we have to prep for that meeting so much earlier. And then we'll have the third Friday count in September. We'll have our final equalized valuations, that'll come October 1st. And then we'll have our October 15th aid certification. And those numbers will all change within the budget, as well as any grant changes or any additions that we may have over the next couple of months. And then we'll have the final budget presented 10 minutes later.
Right, at the board meeting. And then, we don't expect anything different at the annual meeting to report, or do we, as a result of our COVID? as a result of our COVID and reentry plans, or is that not part, or that's a part parcel of what we're talking about at the annual meeting? I mean, it should it should remain the same content and the same.
Correct. Correct, yes, yes.
Is there any kind of funding that we can get for COVID through the government and stuff?
Yeah, we'll talk about that actually in September. We'll come back around, just the overall discussion on the funding that's been carried forward and that type of thing. But we are, we did receive the CARES Act money. Unfortunately, it's like $113,000, which is nowhere near, you know, the expenses that that we incurred for for this this pandemic. But FEMA also offers grant opportunities, and so they are kind of a last resort. So assuming that you haven't used any other grant options, we can submit as many of the expenses that we have to keep everybody safe within our system as we proceed forward with in-person, and so any of those expenses could potentially qualify. You submit and they let us know. So we are applying for the FEMA grants as well. My understanding is there's potentially another round of, there was Gears funding that came through. We do not qualify for that funding, but there could be another round of CARES Act, but it's still at the state level and we just, it's not been determined how any additional funds will be distributed to schools. But wherever there is funding, we are looking for it 100%. Yes.
Let off, and I'm sure. What's available?
Any questions?
Any other comments or discussion?
Where is the 1.6 that that's going to end up in fund balance for the referendum fund?
Correct. Yes, it'll only, we'll only be able to use it to pay down debt. On 39.
And then if you have, if we don't realize 50 FTE reduction, then you'll bring back that adjustment, and then if there is a surplus, that would then go into fund balance? Or would we further reduce the tax funding at that point? Because those numbers come in pretty tight, too.
Right, right. Depending on where the aid comes in, where our student count comes in, once we get those final numbers, if there's a significant surplus of funds, we obviously bring that back. There's not going to be a significant surplus. I mean, we know we're going to be able to designate those if there's in fact a surplus. It would be for all of the planning and pandemic expenses.
Okay. Are there any other comments, concerns? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Preliminary budget 2020, 21 passes unanimously. Moving on, item 5B, Title IX policy.
Motion to approve the policy as presented below.
Brett?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I was waiting for her to read the whole policy.
I was hoping that I wasn't going to get.
Don't call me, don't call me.
We would be, you'd all be asleep.
Any discussion?
Do you want us to summarize? I mean, this is the first time the board has seen this.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We're bringing it to action because this is one of those really quick turnaround things, so I don't know, Jeffrey.
Yeah, I can start. So the new Title IX regulations came into play and are in effect as of August 14th. So some of the requirements that school districts have now is we're required to follow specific processes and procedures for identifying, reporting, investigating, and making determinations with regard to sexual harassment reports. And this deals with students, staff, third-party contractors. It also deals with other school community members, so it could be volunteers or anybody within our system that interacts with our staff or students. We do have a sexual harassment and anti-discrimination policy currently in place, but this just takes it a step further, and there are very specific qualifications as to what the report has to be in order to qualify for a Title IX, Title IX complaint. So we're required to create this policy that outlines very specifically who our Title IX coordinators are, who's going to be the decision maker, who the investigators are, as well as who is going to be doing the appeals. It also requires us to not only post the policy and post the names of the people who are the coordinators, but we are also required to train all staff on recognizing Title IX complaints and giving them a process as far as who need, what they need to follow to report that complaint to the appropriate people. So in Safe Schools, which is our training module, we did have all staff do a very basic overview of Title IX, so they are aware of what it is. At our leadership team meeting, we also had a more in-depth training on Title IX, because a lot of our leadership team members could be participants of an investigation, depending on if it's staff or student related within their building. And then also Jeff Cari and I participated in the next level. Jeff and I will be the Title IX coordinators and Cari will be the decision maker. And so the three of us went through an additional training, most recently, to give us just a little more insight into what we need to be aware of as we develop our processes and procedures. So we are on track with all of the training that's required. The policy is really our next step. And then after this, we will be continuing to work on what our grievance procedure is moving forward. Jeff, anything?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, once the policy is approved, we will be adding that to our parent student handbook. There is a policy section, so we will add that policy, and then we'll also add it to our staff handbook, too.
Is this the name of the policy? Because I feel like it should say basis of sexual harassment in education, not sex in education. Because it kind of like alludes to the fact that you're talking about sex in education. Does non.
Well, let's look.
On the basis of, I think it should say sexual harassment in education programs or, right?
Nope.
Really?
Nope. Not according to Neola. But we could check with them, for sure.
When you read that, doesn't it sound like you're talking about sex?
But I believe it's, I believe that's actually language within the Title IX verbiage. It's no, it's the Title IX states no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation and be denied the benefit of or be the subject to discrimination under any education program or activity.
So it's more like sexual orientation? Or they're saying sexual, I guess I'm confused as to the title of it, because.
I think it's not inclusion or can't.
So it's sexual orientation?
It's it's sexual discrimination.
Okay, but that's not what it says. It just says based on sex in.
Well, we can check with Neola. I mean, that's the, that's the legal.
The Title IX thing.
Yep, that's the legal verbiage, so.
Interesting.
But we can double check with them, for sure.
So much of that Title IX seems to be so locked up.
I'm not going to try to get on some committee to try to change it, but I'm just saying. It just sounds odd. Like, when you read that, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs, does it not hit you guys?
I think it's it's defined as, not that it's defined, but it's probably like sexual orientation, like you're saying, or gender or anything like that.
Or sexual identification.
I do not argue with the law. I am not a attorney.
I suppose you just leave it vague enough and it can hit anything, so I don't know. But it just, when I first read it, I thought we were actually talking about sex ed. Like, we're talking, you know, because sex in education, I don't know, it was just odd. Okay, leave it alone, I guess.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on, item C, open enrollment seats.
Motion to approve the additional open enrollment seats as presented below.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, this is because this, I don't know if the board would like a little bit of information. This is coming back from January.
Yeah, this one I'm interested in, because I think we added, from what was originally, we were, from what I recall our last conversation, we were locked in and masked, and now we're adding, okay.
Yep, exactly.
If you could, please.
Yeah, so this is a great year for open enrollment. It really is. As far as any of my previous years doing this, this is the most number of number of open enrollment seats that we have accepted, and people have taken us up on. So that's pretty incredible. And then to see the amount of revenue that it generates, but then also the education that we'll be able to provide those particular students. So pretty amazing. So as you know, in January, we come forward with the projected enrollment, and you know, that's just a projection based upon what we see currently in grade levels and what we've seen as far as patterns over the years. So that's why we come forward in January with with the projected number of seats. So based upon the number of families that accepted particular seats and based upon where our current enrollment numbers are, we reached back out to our building administrators to look at capacity for respective seats, and we were able to actually make a recommendation to you guys, the board, for some additional seat shares. So we have some additional room in 4K. We're actually asking for five additional seats at 4K. And those, as you know, are partially funded at 60%. And then we also have some additional room at the first grade level, and we are requesting for approval tonight, three additional seats at the first grade level. So great news for us as a system.
Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Item five, revised 2020, 21 calendar, our district reentry plan.
Motion to approve the revised 2020 to 21 calendar plan A, B, or C as presented.
Discussion.
Are we motioning a specific calendar, or is this, which one are we motioning for?
Well, we're discussing now.
Okay.
And then we'll, we could, depending on which one the board chooses, we'll just, I'll ask for a.
Another motion for a specific calendar?
Yeah, we'll just modify that and then so.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure.
Absolutely. So outside of that, we will amend the motion to whatever one the board agrees on, or we can get a agreement on. Now, Dr. Thompson.
So we discussed this in our Committee of the Whole, and the calendar draft A is the calendar that revisions that we talked most about over the last couple of months, which would add four additional days, November 23rd and 24th, March 26th and April 30th, for additional deep cleaning, reapplication of the BioProtect, which is on the most heavily, you know, used areas within our, within our schools, and opportunity to do the work orders, which are projected to kind of fall behind just because of all the cleaning, the additional cleaning that we'll be doing with our Tier One in-person within schools. Also, it would be, and it would actually be, I put virtual learning, but that's not correct.
I know, I was just going to say.
That's planned remote learning, people. So that's, number two is the remote learning. And then third is professional development. So that's that's draft A. Draft B was a, was very similar to draft C, which is up here, so I'll use this. And that was just providing a larger block of break time, looking at when we have a couple of months in between, you know, time when we would have a full week off to actually, you know, kind of have a break in working with, working within our schools. It's like a stopgap in a way. And this mitigating measure would allow for us, we believe, would keep us in Tier One in-person longer. So what we were looking at is taking this larger chunk of time between September and November and saying, where's a midpoint where we could have a stopgap that we could work toward to get to, so that we could stay in, theoretically, stay in in-person longer. We also discussed a February date as well, a week, and Plan B has that in it, but in talking with the board, there was more interest in looking at it by semester, saying, well, let's give this semester a try with these longer breaks as stopgaps. And if that works, we would come back in potentially October or November with maybe the adjustment for spring, kind of depending on where we're at, which would include this February week, and maybe potentially something in April or May, just really kind of depending on how things go. But Plan C was what the board was kind of talking about more, and that would be looking at this semester, making these changes, informing parents that if we're going to have this stopgap here, it would be scheduled in February. So that's, those are the plans, those are the calendar plans.
So the only real difference between B and C is that the February stopgap is pending.
Right.
So B has, or B, so B has the, no, C has the, no, B has the February stopgap. C is the one.
It's where it's potential is to be determined.
C is the one that just has it by some semester with, or first semester and second semester is to be determined.
Yes.
And that's what we were focused on this morning, Scott, right?
So Kelly, can you explain to me the difference between A and C? Because I think, I don't know if I'm in with B, but A and C, with why you would need to stop in the middle after just being in school for five weeks?
Well, that's where we talked about having an actual break in time, where it's a planned break for our students and our staff. We get to that point and we're able to release everybody from school. It would be working from, in that remote learning opportunity. Schools, there would be an opportunity for more PD, universal screening. So typically, we get guest teachers, for example, to support our universal screening days, and we would do it during that week instead, where we wouldn't be getting guest teachers, so we're not interrupting the learning during the time when they're in school and having all that issue. So there's a number of things. And of course, it would be the deep cleaning, it would be work orders, things like that, all of those things. And it would also give students an opportunity to continue with their, the remote learning and being on, you know, the.
I'm just thinking of parents in vacation time, and so like, now you've just made like all this vacation time that they have to take, and they're already struggling with not getting their work hours and not, I don't know.
In addition to quarantine or isolation times that the kids are.
Yeah, I don't know.
So the one question I have with regard to that is, for the older students, remote learning is a possibility because they could be at home, right? But for the younger students, to Tracy's point, they're either going to need to find childcare and then they're not learning. So how, right, they're not learning during that childcare, so if we're going to do remote learning for that week, what's our expectation of those kids that are going to be in childcare because their parents have to continue to work? Do we know? I mean, do we, because that wouldn't just be a week off, that would be a week of remote learning.
Or it would be some days. It might be, it might look different than, you know, what some of the other virtual types of learning, which would be, you know, the teacher's online and you're online right with them at that point in time. We could work through that and determine what that would look best like, but it could be more project-based, research-based, it could be more, you know, those bigger things that would happen, that it wouldn't have to be during a particular time, but it would be over the course of the week, doing this type of research or working on these types of projects.
But if I pick my kid up from daycare at 6:00, get him home by 6:30, make dinner, someone's still got to clean my house, it's always me. Always you. Like, he's got to get done, and and now we've got to do what?
Right.
It's not going to happen. Yeah. Think it first. Not everybody's got to stay at home all the time.
Every teacher would be involved in the remote learning, correct? Every teacher would be involved in that, whatever it is. So would it be possible for hopefully a very small percentage of students that we could have them in, the ones where the parents just absolutely couldn't swing having them at home, have them in the school, but very distanced? I mean, it almost sounds like we're defeating the purpose, but I think if it's a very minimal amount, that might.
How do we judge that now? I mean, now.
Well, the teachers are going to be teaching anyway, it's going to be remote learning, right?
Well, the, the idea at one point was to do everything virtual from the standpoint of even the PD not having anybody in the schools for...
Oh, and do the deep cleaning, that's right as well, okay.
Could it be possible that we could mimic more of our schedule that we have now when we have professional days and stuff and just have those professional days be de-clean days?
Sure.
So then it's only like changing the, those types of, you know, like, then you're not doing this big, huge overhaul of what the families aren't really used to? Because we have, we've always had those in our schedule.
Oh, you mean rather than doing a week? Is that what you're saying?
Right, it's right.
Oh, oh, oh. I thought you meant during that week, could we do something where it's just around the adults and students aren't then expected to have that continuity of learning?
Because for parents, it's going to be a week of vacation that they have to take.
The, the idea on this, I mean, so the idea on this is, and we don't have anything to compare that is, right?
No, no, we don't.
So we don't know.
Right.
So this is really all about risk and impact. It's essentially it. So I guess if you look at it from one perspective, where we all want kids back in school. So, so they're back in school, right? Okay. Well, our greatest risk is having to shut down schools because of staff not being able to be there. Outside of all the other metrics, outside of the state and the county, that's really the metric that's going to impact us. So if you follow the stats, so 40% of our staff reside outside of Waukesha County. And if you just follow this and say, well, what if we start in September and what if, it's hypothetical, the first of October, we're at a tipping point? What if? Well, knowing that we have this built-in week where, where no one's in school, well, we push through and we say, we're going to push through this week. And then all of a sudden, boom, everyone's out of the schools. Anyone that's quarantined staff begins to roll over. So we start immediately that following week and everyone should have rolled off of quarantine, right? And it's a planned absence versus, again, it's risk, right? And you're trying to figure this out versus what if something happened? We were at a tipping point in September or October, we had to shut down. Nobody knows. I, I mean, you know either the day or two before based on staff availability. So I guess the question is, this is a, one option is to put a planned absence or a planned time away from school in, or risk that we're going to have multiple emergent times where we have to be out of school. So I guess that's the question. What are parents going to accept more readily? A planned absence that we think we can push through and keep our schools open? Or emergent absences where we, we're dealing with quarantines? Outside of all the close contacts, all that stuff, it's staff that we're concerned about here. Students don't shut down their schools.
But I'm just thinking, like, this could be more than a week, or it could be less than a week.
Like, yes.
So, I don't know how you could...
I'm not sure what the number is.
Right.
Yeah, you know what I mean though, but, but I think as a parent, I can see both, but I would prefer to at least know that, all right, I know I've got to take off. And yes, parents may have to use vacation. This school year, they better be saving it.
I don't think anybody has any.
Because this is gonna, this is going to require the flexibility of every parent. Every, there isn't a person involved with schooling that is not going to be expected to somehow, in some way, be flexible. And, and that, that message is clear. So either we try to, to incorporate some sort of planned absence that can keep schools open as a stopgap, or we're, we risk being faced with emergent absences that parents have very little notice about. So that's what I think we need to discuss and determine what is the best. Is it a week? Is it four or five days? You know, this whole quarantine thing is, is complicated because if the teachers are home, even if they're remote, learning, well, that's fine, but they're still home, we have to shut down schools. And the second we shut down the school, it becomes even more complicated to get back. So we're in the best position where we don't shut down schools, right? So...
And we saw this also as sort of that in-between an A-B, you know, many schools are doing the hybrid, they're starting the school year as a hybrid. If we did that, that'd be 90 days that we'd be virtual. We're talking 10 days if we, if we did the October and the February. You know what I'm saying? It's like such a fragment amount of time in comparison to some of those other hybrid. It's, it's a different approach.
But there's 13 extra days that parents have to take off between September and December. In a 13 days, that doesn't plan, that isn't, including the ones that we normally have to take off, because people do work Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, all through that winter and Thanksgiving break, maybe minus two days in there, they're taking vacation there too. I worry that we're gonna, I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the right answer is. But I don't see putting a, a week in the middle and hoping that it hits when we need it. I would, I don't know. I, anyone have a crystal ball?
Right now, what's going to be most accepted by the parents is A.
A, right, yeah.
Because they're hoping that this takes care of itself over time and we not, it's as close to what the original plan was nine months ago. Like Chris said, I totally understand what you're saying, Chris, that, well, why don't we plan these times? But I think most parents are going to say, I'll deal with it if I have to deal with it when the time comes. Even though you're trying to plan ahead for them, they would rather be in, they'd rather have a schedule and be in as much as possible and deal with it if the time comes up.
That's why, like, if you pull up Plan A, I feel like you could, those professional days, those red days, add to like one of those blue days in front of it.
Is A up here?
Yeah.
Is that A?
This is A now.
So like, you know, see where the reds are?
So you're here, so you're here.
Yeah, put a blue in front of it, put a blue in front of the other one. So you, like, you're going to have a day of, whoa.
Get your touchy hands off there.
Oh, is that a smart board?
Don't touch.
Oh, it's a smart board?
Yes.
It's not A.
There you go.
Nice shot, Tony.
Stop it from doing it.
So like September 24th.
Get your fingers off it.
Right.
October 15th.
Right.
Well, parents are still going to have to plan a day off then, it's just not going to be a week.
Well, we're still, so are we trying to, so I got...
But are you trying to clean? Are you trying to, like, what is it?
Well, cleaning may be the, I, I mean, it may be that, that, that we break up the cleaning days.
Right.
I think the idea is, is that as long as, I mean, that may do it if, if that works out. If, I guess, the idea of a stopgap is to build in some sort of strategic time where there's like, there's like no one in school for some amount of time. And if during that amount of time, we would have to be closed anyway. In fact, maybe we're reducing the amount of time we're closed if we break up the cleaning. I mean, that buys us time because even, and I think this guest teacher comment by Jeff and this suggestion by Eric, that's actually, that may actually, you know, after I heard that, I made a note here, that may actually alleviate the need for a, a planned week. Because if you actually have enough staff or supervisors where those teachers who are quarantined can actually, because it's not even the teachers who are quarantined that matters here, it's the fact that you'd have a supervisor in the classroom, because that's what you need, is physical presence at the, the school. So if we have that based on Eric's comment, it, that may push us through because now we have more available staff. Plus, if we work in a few of these cleaning days, that may actually do it, right? I mean, I think that's a strategic plan that we incorporate. So when January comes, people look to us, they're like, oh my gosh, I wish I followed what Muskigo did. Right? Because we are, I think, months ahead. And, and we are, we're not, I mean, we're definitely not on the bleeding edge, but we're, we're on the cutting edge here. We know what our community wants and our staff and board are working to make it happen. So maybe...
Maybe then we still look at it after the semester, because we'll now have something under our belt to get a feel for how things went, that maybe, maybe we, it does make sense then to add something in February. I don't know.
Yeah.
But at least then we have an idea instead of, I mean, I'm hopeful, but I don't...
So, how would you do that then here? So how would that work? So right now, the blue days, so right now, the blue days are what? Are those the cleaning days?
Yeah, the remote learning and the professional, and cleaning.
So the blue, okay. Tony?
That's the, that's the BioProtect.
He touched it again, right?
I, I think so.
Yes.
Right, the blue is cleaning.
So the blue is the cleaning days. Well, it says really well, or that's a PD days.
It was.
Stop touching it. Sit under your hands. Back up. Sit under your hands.
Okay, all right. So...
Operational hands.
This isn't going to work.
Use the gavel to point.
When they gavel?
So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is adding a blue day to September, to October, and then I guess the question would be, do you want the December? For planning purposes, we could go into January, because that's still first semester. And then we could come back in November or something to talk about whether or not blue days should come in here more than just these two that we have right now.
So what was this, so, so that, so we would have then Thursday and Friday?
The 15th and Thursday, Friday.
Thursday and Friday. They couldn't, and this is Thanksgiving week, right?
Yep, so that whole week.
So are we doing the whole week off?
Yep, we could do the whole week there. And then...
Is that, do we usually have it off?
Do we need a whole week?
Do we usually have it off?
And we only have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday normally.
I think normally it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Well, maybe you have one extra day, maybe don't you do?
But do you want them to come back for one day?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I know, I don't know.
That's why we thought both days would be probably...
I would keep it at both days for that.
Doesn't that mean staff got off on Thanksgiving?
Right, so that's why, yeah, yeah, at least, if we did one day, then, okay, that'd be good, but still you have, then only one day you're coming back.
Right.
So I get it. They wouldn't be, yeah, okay, I get it that way.
Dr. Thompson, how long does it take to clean to apply in each school?
The BioProtect, like, how long does it have to set the board?
Well, doesn't it have to be reapplied every 30 days?
If Jeremiah was here, he'd be able to answer that question. But I mean, it is, it is a substantial reapplication of that product throughout the entire district, you know, so I don't know. I, I couldn't even tell you.
Well, the reason I ask that is, is if the staff that's applying it...
Yes.
Is not going to be part of the professional day, right? Because the teachers are, can, can it be applied while they're doing their professional day? So do we really need the 15th of October and the 24th of September? Can it just not be about red days already?
Yeah, you know, we could do anything, right? We're going to make anything work.
Like, can they do it in that one day?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, because I don't know, does it take two days to apply? I mean, that, just to add to add doesn't make much sense to me because two days isn't going to give you any break from a, from a...
No more benefit than one.
Quarantine standpoint or anything like that.
Yeah, and I think what will, what it will do though, is if we're talking also about the professional development day from the standpoint of universal screeners and having kids on a planned virtual day, so that teachers can come around those universal screeners, those kinds of things, so that, you know, we're not taking sub-time. That's what would be, for an example, what we would have a substitute come in for, would have those teachers coming in together to talk about, you know, the results of assessments and things like that. So in combination, it would be better to add a day, and would you say October or would you say September or both?
So right now, we're what?
I was just asking Courtney, like...
Okay, so we're still following this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so to the point earlier that we discussed about additional planning for alignment and consistency, I think the better we can space those out and have consistent times for teachers to collaborate with one another around those topics, the better. So that's, that's very new.
Well, can your, can the teachers collaborate remotely? Do they need to be in school? Because that's another option too, you know, that would reduce the one day. So if, if you took a PD day here, right, and I'm going to touch it, this thing here, so if you took a PD day of the 25th or the 16th, if the teachers did that remotely, that would essentially leave the schools...
Open for cleaning.
Open for cleaning and you'd get a full three day, well, actually get like three and a half days off, but can the teachers do that remotely and be out of the schools? I mean...
There's something to be said about in-person, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, I get it. I'm just asking though, in the interest of trying to...
Ideally, if you look at that, those fall dates, Courtney and Christie, what would your, ideally, from the standpoint of making sure to have time for that and, and just really looking at the guest teacher piece and making sure...
I think the universal screening would be better done in person and I think they could collaborate virtually. So I, I like, I like spacing it out. If we're looking to add, I would say maybe late September and late October, knowing that we would be several weeks in and we would be seeing how things are working and if there would be an opportunity to shift and adjust and/or continue the professional development related to the virtual learning plans.
What if you did a Friday, Monday thing?
Friday, Monday, would that also work? I mean, if we put a blue day on either, rather than the Thursday, do it on Monday following the weekend, would that work as well?
Actually, if you did that, the, the, the second and the fifth, you could drive all the way through, or, I mean, you could drive all the way through then, because you'd have four weeks, a four-day weekend, and then four more weeks, you could drive to here. That would be your push week. If we ran into issues here, you would know you'd be off at least this here, right? Maybe that's the key, is then that's the push week. Because at some point, I guess, where's it going to be, I mean, where, where is science saying it's going to be the worst? Probably here.
October, November.
Later, later.
So, so if, if you want to, if you want a push week...
That's why our colleges are stopping after Thanksgiving break.
Yeah, I mean, if you want a push week, right, that would be the one, right around here, you push to here. So then everyone's off here at least, so that's four days, five days. So, oh, four, one, two, three, four, five, like, five days, yeah. So this would be, well, that would be our built-in push week then.
Kind of.
Yeah. I mean, actually, and...
Looking at the 26th and 27th, Thanksgiving, that's, most people, most staff will probably want to be gone.
Well, it can be. I'm just saying, that's off anyway. So that would be off normally, right? So that would be the, the push week, the light at the end of the tunnel of things, well, we just pushed to that week and now we know we're all off five days.
Right.
And then, I don't know, then these two, what do we do with these two though?
I, I would leave those.
Okay. So where, where would these be? So if you were to do a Monday and a Friday, where would that work out?
But those are there already, right?
So this is Friday, Monday, okay? So that would be the end of September and then the, the middle of October toward the end, you know, 16 and 19. So it does break it up, you have five weeks and then...
So you'd still want to add a day on each one of those orange?
The weekends, you have a four-day, and then, then you have one, two, three, four, five days.
See, I was thinking of just combining these two.
Well, we need them spread out for, that's, we have to have it spread out.
That's like the schedule, how it is, Chris. It's like they're, I just was, I didn't know if you needed more of these.
And the BioProtect once a month is what we want to make sure we're doing.
Well, if you, if you move out the 16th one week, that would kind of split it up a little more evenly into thirds that, until Thanksgiving.
I know that we have reasons why we put it on the 16th.
Okay.
Is, but I, I'm asking them, I mean, if we push that...
Yeah, the reason why is because we finished our universal screening assessment on October 7th and that professional development day on the 15th.
16th.
16th allows our staff to come around, have student data and formulate their student learning objective goals for the entire year. So it's significant.
Yeah, they're, so, yeah, they're spaced out that way for a reason. And now what we're talking about is for this unique year, does it make sense for us to have more planned days so that we're not using the guest teachers sporadically? We wouldn't have a guest teacher on those days, we'd be able to provide students with something else.
So maybe, maybe, I think I will, so what are our plans? So these two days here?
Remote.
So that, no one's in school.
Right.
Right.
Home now. They're required to be.
Well, maybe that's the deal. We do what Eric said. We get, we, we, we try to staff five or whatever extra staff at each of our schools or however you do it. And then we just leave the schedule as it is and just push through. That becomes our week then. Our, and it's already a week that we have off, so the only two days, that's not, two days in the entire semester that would be different is gonna be these two, the day here, the 23rd.
The answer though is the one day enough to apply the bio protect and to thoroughly clean it if that's our plan.
And do we need to add a day to the 16th and the, or the 25th and 16th to get the.
For the cleaning.
The cleaning side of it.
If not, I'd say don't do it.
Exactly, exactly.
So you're thinking, was this built into it, the bio protect?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would we leave December 21st and the 22nd?
It was more the, the discussion after, once we were talking about that week off or that, you know, that push week, that we would utilize those days for the universal screening, the, the more, more around the professional development and student data piece. So we could do the, the, the once a month, the bio protect. It would be the added time as a planned absence to plan for students and the collaboration around their assessments and things like that.
So then right now, looking at option A, if we leave it the way it is, the 25th, so we, so we start school the first, the 25th, we push through that, no school, but teachers are here.
Correct.
And then we push to the.
And cleaning is done.
Right, and that deep clean is done. We push to the 16th. No school, deep cleaning. And then I guess at that point, because I don't think anyone, science, well, it, the numbers would say this is the time to.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's what it is. So then, and then we push through. And I guess just hypothetically, if we did start to see something tip as far as quarantines and staff and whatnot, we have those guest teachers, we have, heck, I would apply to go sit in a school or classroom. And, and to push to this week, because this is really the week, this day we have to push to the 20th. And once we hit that date, boom, I, I, I mean.
So do we have to like have these dates? Like what if, like, because we don't have a Christmas out. What if it starts to get flu season, sick season, COVID gets worse, whatever? Can we add two blue days on the 21st and 22nd of December if we needed to? Could we, or do we have to have that out there right now?
Oh, no, I mean, that, that's up to you guys as far as the.
We can, we can always add.
Yeah.
We can subtract.
Well, I think that's kind of expected this year for most, if we're, I mean, we've already said we have a tier two and a tier three and we don't know how long it might last. So if we, we start seeing some spikes, we might just say, let's just go to tier three for two days, do the remote learning.
I feel better about seeing how it goes since we know that our population wants us in person. See how it goes. And if we come back with numbers like this isn't as safe as we thought, things are not going as planned, I think people are gonna be more receptive to that than having random, why am I off because you think maybe a kid might need it?
Yeah.
I, I don't like that. It's based on nothing.
It's a good conversation to have so that at least we've vetted that. So now we're back to A. With the, with the belief then, if, if we're asked, things get worse, then we all know that yes, we can, right?
Put up some blue days.
And we can react appropriately, right? And, and that would be how. And so I think we all know what we can do, so.
Yeah, and if we can piggyback on the days that we already have marked off, so if, you know, if something does happen, we can.
If like in October, we could add.
We could get that, to that week, then we could use that week, at least it's one, you know, they're already planning one day that week.
I mean, if we have multiple scenarios, I think that's effective in these types of, you know, crises, right? I mean, you need to have that.
Understanding that everyone's kind of doing what they can in the moment, right now, and that things might be totally different tomorrow. I think we've kind of all come to expect that in our lives right now.
I think people get more angry when you make a decision six months out, not knowing anything, like canceling all these sports and canceling all this stuff. And you're like, but you don't even know what it's gonna be like in September, which.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
That's kind of like what we're trying to avoid here. Like let's stay normal and if we have to react, we'll react in a moment.
And then.
That's where you get the frustration.
I would actually like, the one thing I liked that you had on Plan C was the, just tentative planning for that. What did you call it? The push week?
Or the stopgap week.
And I think, I think by the time we get to November or, or December, we'll kind of have a good idea because February is right in the middle of flu season. It might, we might, after looking at numbers, say maybe we should take that push week.
We need to evaluate them.
So at least I, I would like to, to discuss that and maybe we should put it on the calendar as a tentative week off or a remote learning week.
In February?
The one in February. Keep on, on Schedule C, it's the.
But some people have to book their time off.
So we would just review possibly adding the February.
We would actually have data to make that decision by November, December. We actually say, I wish we would have taken that push week in, in the middle of October or, you know what, we really didn't need it, so we are gonna take this off as remote learning and, and just continue on. But at least we'll have some data by that point.
So is that enough to say, publish the calendar as is, however, we have these caveats that as a board, staff and us will, will look at the data at some time here, Brett, like in October, November. And then if we need to change the calendar for the following second semester, we can make that case at that point. Not now though.
I'd like to keep the, on, on Plan C, take that February calendar, put it on there because it's alternative. At least give the parents a warning. We're gonna take a look and potentially, hopefully we won't have to, but potentially.
I think that's gonna confuse them.
You think so?
Yeah.
They're gonna look at it and go, what, what are you doing?
Yeah, you take a week off in February? Are you kidding me?
Now I have to turn it off. I think that we need to, my own personal opinion is that the parents, they know that we are having these conversations. They know that as soon as the metrics, you know, or it becomes unsafe that we're gonna have to act, right? I mean, I don't think anybody is under the assumption that we, this is the calendar and there's gonna be no changes.
Correct.
But I think that parents understand there could be changes if something happens.
I think something in being found saying, you know, your child's safety is our first priority. If we see unsafe trends or the data from Waukesha County is coming back and it, it doesn't look like it's safe to stay open, you know, we could make changes here.
Just the data within our own school.
Yeah.
I think that's what you did in March, right? We kind of like, let's see if we need to stay open or let's see if we need to close and you made that decision accordingly. And I think it was the right thing to do and I didn't hear one complaint in March about what we, I mean, not one, so.
I think everybody was in shock.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, in essence, we are because really don't. But I think I'm comfortable and, and I get, because it's a scenario that, that I, that, that, that you can offer to parents and that's good. So if we follow this and then we just have checkpoints or, or guide, you know, you know, some, some point where we check points in time and then we look at the data, but as long as we as a board know and agree that if we have to add days in order to mitigate some threat, that we're willing to do that. I don't, if we have to, I, I could certainly agree to add another week. However, I think after listening everything here, I'm more on board now with following this. However, I'm very pleased that the board, we agree on the multiple scenarios that we would have to execute and we would have these points in time to take a look and see. So for me, it's enough that the board is agreeing to that. And I think the parents will definitely appreciate that, hey, we have these scenarios in mind. We've discussed them, we've talked about them and we have plans. Should we need to re-react, we can. And we're, I mean, we're advocates of each other here, our superintendent and the board, right? So that's the main concern here for me is, is that we're moving forward in unison. And if everyone's in agreement, I, I can go with that then.
My, my only thing then would be that we, we definitely need to make it clear that these, the remote learnings, those are just the planned ones and that the, I think on the counter, we need to say, we may, we may be adding at the district's discretion, more remote learning because of any potential outbreak. I'm not sure how the wording would be, but we definitely need to make it clear that this can change in a day's notice simply because of changes, changes to COVID cases within the school.
I think you're gonna get more negative feedback on those four days of remote learning than positive, to be honest with you. I'm fine with leaving them there, but I think people are just.
Well, there's two.
There's only two.
There's four if you look at the bottom.
Two, and then, yeah, two person.
For.
Because I think the parents are gonna be like, you know what, we did that last year, not real thrilled with it. I'm not sure why you're putting these in. So I think you're probably even gonna get some negative feedback about those four, let alone if we put eight.
Ten, yeah.
Courtney, what were you going to?
I just was wondering clarification wise, so if there's communication sent out about the possibility of needing additional remote learning, is that not the same thing as what's already been articulated in the plans? Because we have pending risk, pending measures, metrics, that was the word I was looking for.
Yeah.
That could move us to a tier three. So I feel like that communication is, is there. That's what that plan is developed for. So I don't know if it's necessarily like a calendar change if we were to shift to that, but that's what those tiered plans.
Well, we don't want to shift to tier three. That's the thing.
Correct.
So, and, and the metrics to shift are somewhat big actually because they're per school and it's about staff. That's what will shift us to tier three. Make no mistake, this, unless we're shut down by the county or the state, it's the staff metric that determines whether we move from tier one, tier two, or tier three. So that's it. This is what the board has said. So, so any other metric, that's for the county and the state. So what we're trying to do is assess the staffing of the schools, period. So I guess based on this, if we keep the schedule as is and we just have checkpoints throughout maybe every, well, you know, our cows or we, we just see where we are and just keep it like that. I, the only comment I had here in the remote learning, I, I didn't know what that was. I, I figured that was just the time to, of push week, week, week here. You could make this tentative and, and just, but I, I guess I.
It's more deep cleaning.
Yeah, I really don't have any major issue with that. If someone wants to come and gripe with a lot of remote.
It's a good week to add the two days of no school anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, a lot of people are probably, I'm guessing your attendance might be down those days anyway, people traveling during that time.
And, you know, it's, I mean, that's, that's actually really a wink, wink, nudge, nudge, okay, two days, yeah, uh huh. So let's, I'm fine with that.
And I think people are really trusting us. Like we are doing so many mitigation and so many safety measures that, that I think at this point, we're being so proactive. We don't need to unnecessarily be reactive when there's nothing to react to yet.
I'm appeasing the kids because the kids want off.
But the parents want to work.
Yeah.
Someone started to vote.
Right now they want to go back.
Exactly, all kids want to go back.
Yeah, they want, yeah, they, they're biting at the bullets being back.
Until they get back and then in November, they're gonna be like, where's those blue days?
So to Courtney, so then from your perspective with regard to making any notation on the calendar itself about these might change is really reflected in this, that if things change, it'll be because of this, you know, this flow of potential.
Yeah, I felt like it was a parallel conversation, that it was already.
Maybe we just cite the, that we.
We could even link something like this.
You could, yeah.
Or the flow chart of why this, why the calendar might not.
Look like this.
Stay the way that it is. It's because of that potential flow chart that we'll have. And we could link, link that because that is what could eventually create something different than this. So the only thing that I, that I will ask the board if it's okay to change, and I, I'm looking to TNL about this, is moving the 26th up to the 19th because that was the week we had blue on Plan C in case in October we decide we're gonna have a week that, that gap. It would be this week rather than that end of February. So is it okay to move the red up?
I need to check when ACT is.
The 26th, yeah.
I think ACT is in March, but pretty.
Okay. So if the board doesn't mind us moving the, being either the 26th or the 19th, we'll just publish whatever means.
My question to you is, and I, and maybe you don't know this because maybe the state hasn't already developed this or not, but are they telling you, because like we have it at Marquette that, like the clinical has to be 60% hours of in person or, you know, 40 out or whatever like that. Do they have anything like that for the remote learning versus having days for professional days offerings like that? Do they have any specifics?
Like how many hours we have to do virtual in order for it to count as a day?
Right.
Courtney, do you know that offhand?
No.
Oh, okay.
So based off of the most recent resource from DPI's website. Now, there's various resources dependent on when DPI posted it. So Kelly, I think I had sent it to you last week, but it was essentially that the expectation is that it, it's not the same amount of time, but would replicate the expectation of what's happening in person. So if you think about the actual makeup of a student's day, there's transitions, there's other things that they're doing. So taking that into account when a virtual day is created for a student. So it was that consistent expectation with flexibility is what they said.
Okay.
Yeah, but they haven't published, yeah, they haven't published like minutes.
Some matrix to make it be that you're, got your hours in.
Right, so they're kind of saying, we're gonna trust you at this point because they don't have an exact amount. And they also understand that you're not going to have kids sitting in front of a computer because, like for Kate, that's not how they learn anyway, you know? So you can't replicate some of the play-based stuff. You can't replicate some of the collaboration stuff. You can't replicate, you know, the turn and talks, you know what I mean? Like there's just some things that are just difficult, so it's reasonable.
I kind of like having less blue days just because I feel like there's more learning that's occurring with less blue days. I don't know.
Sure. All right, I think we have our marching orders. We're gonna go with the Plan A. We're gonna move February to either the 19th or keep it on the 26th. And that will just be based on when the ACT is going to be scheduled for, but otherwise. Courtney?
March 9th.
So you're fine.
Oh, so then we're fine if we go up or, so we'll move it up to the 19th, right? Is that okay? We'll move it to the 19th just for, in case we do that one week off in February.
So I'd like to make a friendly motion that we accept Draft A with the exception of moving the remote learning day from March 26th to March 19th and some wording to clarify that it could, the calendar could be modified.
So you're making an amendment to the.
Well, I'm making a friendly, friendly motion, friendly amendment so that all we need is Bob and Tracy to agree with it. Rather than having a long debate.
Well, and then the only other thing I would add is don't call it remote.
I said friendly motion.
Learning schedule, put it as distance, temporary distance learning, right?
Oh, to coincide with this.
Go in charge of the tier one.
So is that okay if the first and the second?
Is that okay with you, Brett?
Uh, Bob made the motion, so if he's good with it and Tracy's good with it, then we can vote on, so we're good. Just what we discussed.
Did you hear what I added to your motion?
Well, that's a.
Just so that you, so, because we have remote learning schedule up there where it should really say temporary distance learning.
Yeah, well, I did say with the proper wording.
Okay.
Indicating.
Are we moving March? You said March. I thought we were moving February.
February 26th, 19th.
Well, February 26th. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the March 26th.
Oh, no, yeah.
The same exact days.
My apologies. Thank you. So yes.
So just to be clear, we had an original motion and a second to bring us on the floor. Brett is now making an amendment to the original motion. You don't need to be okay with anyone. You can just make an amendment.
A friendly amendment, all it needs is the motion and the second to agree.
So you're fine with that then? And the, and the first and the second are fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the motion on the table now is basically to prove Calendar A would be modified. Okay, so the motion on the table now is basically to approve Calendar A with the modification of furbage and the date changed in February. Okay, any further discussion on that?
So the two days in March and April that are blue, are we keeping those blue guys? You're okay with that?
That'll be the one, those are the.
For now, anyway.
For the BioProtect.
Right, I, I mean, we've got to change it. So any other, so, so Schedule A, Calendar A, right? Returns the Mesquiko Norway School District to school in person, okay? And it provides what is arguably 90% of our students for in-person and 10% for the virtually. And we as a board and administration then believe during this time of uncertainty, this strategy is robust and flexible enough, no matter what the future holds, that we're able to adjust and react accordingly. Because our priority is to keep the schools open. And so we're all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then, hearing no other comments, concerns, or suggestions. All those in favor of returning to school this fall, please state. Or please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are going back to school. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you for the discussion.
That was a good discussion.
Yeah, it was very good, thank you.
That was actually good, yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right, good, so then.
Don't touch it. Don't.
I didn't grow up in that. I can't stand it. My Marquette, too, I still go to the chalkboard.
I need a long hand on the stick.
I still go to the chalkboard.
You have to get right there.
No, they have whiteboards.
I don't, no, I don't like those either, because they've got this whole smartboard in, in Carahay or a go, and then, and we'll wear it all. It's the same thing. I always go to the nice chalkboards, I can just do all the things fun and.
Old school.
Okay, anyway.
It's okay, Tony's got your back.
Moving on, thank you, Tony.
Just unclick.
All right, moving on. 5E, gifts, grants, and requests.
Motion to accept with thanks the gifts and grants is listed below. To the Mesquiko Norway School District, Christian Schmidt, CG Schmidt, $500. Bay Lane Elementary School, Piper Power, $15,780 to be used to add two handicap swings and rubber flooring for safety and wheelchair accessibility. A special thank you to the Mesquiko Chamber of Commerce for coordinating donations to be given to new teachers of the Mesquiko Norway Schools. Donations from Mesquiko Health and Wellness Center, The View at Town Center, Margaret Mall Agency, Deb Schrader, Realty Executives, Mesquiko American Legion Post 356, Mesquiko Tire and Auto, Busek Verbic Funeral Home and Crematory, LeBri Pure and Natural, Great Clips, and more.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Let's go to the chair unanimously. Moving on, item 6, discussion item. Discussion item 2020, 21 budget holder, just a holding place, or?
Yep, I just wanted to mention we were going to come back around the COVID costs at the next meeting. We'll be talking about that already, so.
Thank you for putting all that together, too. Okay, moving on, item 7. Information follow-up on A, financials. On B, onsite clinic. C, personal information memo. And D, communications and miscellaneous business is authorized by law.
I would like just, just one thing. We approved the SRO contract this evening, and, under the general consent agenda. Under, under a number of the memo of understanding under 14G, the school resource officers are serving as the DARE instructors, as they have for many years. We've talked in the past of asking if there is maybe a better program that we could utilize with the SROs for drug prevention. Have we made any progress on that? You don't have to answer me now, but if there's any information, you can email us, and I would be interested. I think DARE is a great program, but as I've said before, it might just be at the wrong age to, to do that. And if there's a better program out there that would be more effective, I'd like to hear about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
Okay, hearing no more communications and miscellaneous businesses authorized by law. Any more?
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
For the personal information memo, with all those lifeguards, are we opening up our pool or how are we using them?
I think it's been open.
It's been open?
Yeah, we've had, it's open.
Oh, I didn't even realize that, okay, cool.
It's been actually going quite well.
I thought you meant open up differently, but.
No, 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 I didn't know it was open.
It's actually been going quite well, too.
I had no idea. Was there something on Facebook about it?
It's been on there, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, must have missed it, sorry. Okay, because there's like, why are we hiring all these people over now?
But it's also for FIAID, too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On a same form for Dr. Thompson, are two non-representations coming? Important positions.
Oh. Yes, so.
Where they're going and where were they going.
John, you know, actually, I don't know where he's going. I don't know that anybody knows where he's going. He resigned, he, he, yeah.
I am not aware of any new position at this time.
So Kyle Terrell, who is, was, his assistant is the interim. And we'll, once we open things up again, we'll be looking to replace John, but at this point, we have an interim. Kyle is able to manage what we have right now. And then Kate is going to Waterford, actually. And she'll be taking on a bit of a different role there. She'll be a director, and she's just, will have a bit of some different responsibilities. So it's just where she wants to be next. So we will be replacing her position. Yeah.
Okay, hearing no other business. Motion to adjourn is in order. Mr. Schrader.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That'd be a work daily for some years.